Yes. She's about 15 minutes. Uh, Rafael, let me get the D train. I don't think she's gonna be here.
Where they go, they feel like, we're gonna have to do this every day. And they don't have to read it. Well, see, the two, that's the thing that I got out of the two, like, the question here is about like block schedule.
Right. I think that's a lot.
And the time and trying to get it all within that period, because you saw that in the verbatim. You have time, have time to get it. Yeah. The time and creativity are the two different ones. And they're real. Well, I would offer, yeah. Jarrett's best and most important. I'd offer a third, but it's very correct. Which is just errors and textbooks and our stats and everything back there.
Could you show me that? I'll show you.
Yeah. But to me. I did. Right. And that's I have the East Wing television on me on your TV.
Yeah. Errors and textbooks. That's actually powerful teaching tools. Because you, if you just come straight down to the textbook, you must be right. All right. With that, afternoon, if you teach everyone critical thinking. There. Sorry. Just whatever.
All right, we're a little late. We'll get started with our work. We've got several board members that'll be joining us shortly. Ms. Johnson-Hawthorne is traveling. Ms. Cash will be joining us shortly. She had a personal loss from her close family friend. Uh, her family, and so they had services today. So she'll be joining us shortly. And Mr. Fletcher has another conflict. We'll get to join us later in the afternoon. So with that, we'll get started.
Jungle, sir. That's a lot to juggle. Thank you.
Whatever, by the way, with this moment, Charlie. So we're starting off this afternoon with the Magnet Schools Assistance Program, Brad. So I'll turn over to our magnificence.
Good afternoon, Chair Sutton and Board Members, Superintendent Moore. We're excited today to bring you, sharing an exciting opportunity with you. As you may recall, just a few months ago during the Student Achievement Committee, we introduced some information around our immersion programs. And at that time indicated that there was a strong possibility that wouldn't seem like we'd bring forth some new programming around that area. An unexpected opportunity has presented itself through the Magnet School Assistant Program. And with that, we felt like it would be certainly advantageous for us to pursue that opportunity. So with me today is Dr. Beth Cochran, our Senior Director of Magnet Programming, Tasha Haynes-Cardness, the Senior Administrator, as well as Sherri Golden Perry, who works with our Global Schools Network and Ivy Programs. They're going to share some information with you relative to this proposal. And I'll leave it to Dr. Cochran. She's got some additional staff with her that may be available to answer any questions that you may have as we proceed through today's presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. Good afternoon. We also have Lisa Thompson, our Director of Magnet Themes, Tila George East, who's our present Magnet School Assistance Program Senior Administrator. And we have the Senior Director of Grants here with us. This is obviously the grant, because anybody who's planned who's here for backup is well. So you have lots of, lots of people's attention today. So as Wade said, we found out about this grant just in December. So we were getting ready for the 2022 grant, found out about this and definitely wanted to take advantage of it. I share this slide each time that we are bringing grant schools with you. And it's fortunate that we get to keep adding each time it's put into you. So just to kind of show the strong track record that Wade County has in getting the grants. So it's definitely a great opportunity for us. This grant cycle is a five-year cycle, like the last one, three years to that, they were usually three-year cycles. So it's a five-year cycle, $15 million over five years. Sorry. So we just wanted to share, since 2012, new magnets we've added in Wake and how they've kind of come about. MSAP-funded, so new magnets, you can see in the next slide, is MSAP-funded revised magnets. You can see up there, I'm not gonna read through them. And then MSAP-initiated means that was a year that there was an additional grant and that we applied and didn't get. But in Wade County, where we do that, and they continue to be magnets, and we try to support them with local funds, not to the same degree that they could have gotten the grant. And then the far right-hand side are local magnets that we've added since 2012. Then the, these are the revised magnets. So as part of, all of these are, were part of grants. The left side is the MSAP-funded revised, presently Southeast Rowley, Bug, and Millbrook Elementary are all part of this present grant, all revised magnets. And then Poolemore Square, we're in the previous grant that we had, Palines Millbrook were in that same grant, as Athens and Dupree did, we didn't get, but we're still supporting them locally. So in selecting the schools for this grant application, we acknowledge that there's other schools that we would like to consider magnetizing in the future. For example, a locally funded magnet middle school could be a feeder for our immersion program in Eastern Wake. And since this is an additional MSAP grant cycle, as I alluded to earlier, we'll have another grant cycle in 2022 that we'll be able to select new schools for. So there's definitely lots of opportunities moving forward even beyond the schools we're recommending today to either revise or add new magnets. So there's six magnet purposes, and I'm definitely not gonna read through them all, but the grant purposes include that every Student Succeeds Act updates. And overall, some of the wording has changed from previous grants, but the purposes remain the same. And I wanted to point out that the first purpose on this slide and the third on the next slide talk about the prevention of minority group isolation and promoting diversity and increasing choices, which are the MSAP purposes most unique to Magnet School, which is Magnet School, which is why I'm drawing attention to them. And so as I just said, the Purpose Three on this slide also talks about prevention of minority group isolation, promoting diversity, and increasing choices. Then Purpose Five on this slide talks about the ability to sustain magnet programs after funding ends, which is a key card in writing in the grant. And Wade County has a very strong track record of doing that. So just to point out that first. Then the MSAP grant considerations are kind of breaking down the purposes that I just wanted to point out a couple of things about them. The official guidelines won't come out until later this month, but we obviously need to start working with the schools to develop their magnet theme and write the grant. These grant considerations are based on what we know from past grants and particularly the present grant that we're in right now, that ends in 2022. The first consideration is reminding us that we can create new magnets or significantly revised themes, that you've already heard me allude to in the revised and the new magnets on the previous slide. And then number two was the biggest change from the MSAP grant prior to 2017, because it added socioeconomic integration and not just minority group isolation. Prior to 2017, it was just minority group isolation in the grant. Wade County changed that in 2000, 2001, but in the grant, it was just minority group isolation. And now it's not, which also gives us a way down with the grant. The fourth consideration is ensuring that the schools that you picked do not negatively impact surrounding schools. You don't want to pick a school to reduce minority group isolation and create more minority group isolation at other schools around. So it would help the school that we're magnetizing, but not help the schools around. So that's sometimes hard to explain, but that's a critical part. We have to actually submit with the grant countless charts of feeder patterns and all that. And because of Wade County being the size it is, it's a lot of page of charts that are data accountability and grants office works with. The fifth consideration requires that you submit a voluntary desegregation plan as part of your grant application. It's the only federal grant that requires this. That's why a review by the Office of Civil Rights is part of the grant application process. A very positive call if we get that in summer, because that means we made it past the competitive stage. And we call up John and to come and talk to OCR, hopefully get us over the hump to get a grant. Then number six requires that students are selected by some kind of lottery versus academic standards, which Wade County does for all their schools. But in some districts, magnet schools are all application, you submit grades, et cetera, to apply to get in. And that's not how Wade County does their magnets, and that's very important for the grant. And then number seven is a change from previous grants, where interventions that are proposed in the grant must be evidence of promised standards. And there's a what works clarion house of data and research that you have to have research from that in your grant to support the grant proposal. So that's a, that's a new piece in the past, this previous grant and this grant. So the magnet principles, it seems like we share these anytime we talk to you, but it's really important as well as meeting the grant purposes. We need to meet Wade County's magnet principal purposes of reducing high concentration of poverty, promoting diversity in school integration, maximizing school facility use, and providing innovative and expanded educational opportunities. So in a minute, when you see some of the charts, you'll see how we try to align all of those things together. So this chart you have in assembly with the information filled in on each of the schools. And this is where you can see the MSAP purposes, the magnet principles, and we go through each of the schools that you have in your folders to show how they meet those purposes. And then also in assembly, you have the magnetization chart. And obviously, the last chart's used just for grants. This is used for any school we're magnetizing, and these are all the questions that we consider when we're looking at magnetizing the school. So now Tasha's gonna talk to you about the three candidate schools for this grant.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
So the three new magnet schools that we are proposing in this, in this grant cycle are Dillard Drive Elementary, Dillard Drive Middle, and East Carey Middle. And East Carey Middle, we're proposing to convert to a K-8 school. And the next three slides are gonna talk about, or just outline the reasons for selecting these three schools. So with Dillard Drive Elementary School and Dillard Middle, it creates a K-8 program pathway on the same campus. The magnet application results from last year, we always survey our magnet applicant families. We received feedback from that survey that there was high interest in more rural language offerings and immersion schools. We also looked at all three schools, the free and reduced lunch percent, which for all three is above the district average. And then for Dillard Drive Elementary, the crowding with trailers is 103% compared to the district average of 102%, but we are exploring options to open magnet seats at that school. With Dillard Drive Middle School. There we go.
Thank you.
Thank you. So similar to Dillard Drive Elementary, Dillard Drive Middle, part of the K-8 pathway, also the free and reduced lunch percentage is 43%, which is higher compared to the district average for middle schools in our county. And then the crowding at the school is lower, 86% compared to the district average for middle schools. For East Carey, sorry. Um, for East Carey, it would, the K-8 school would allow nine years of continuous support for students, for all students on the campus. We, our district has tried some different initiatives over several years in the past, one being multi-track year-round school, also designating it as a STEM networked school. Even with those initiatives, we, the school has not been able to increase facility utilization and school integration. So, and again, based on the parent feedback in our survey, there's lots of interest in expanding rural language and immersion programs. Again, at this school as well, the free and reduced lunch percentage is higher than the district average for middle schools, and the crowding is lower than the district average. In this next slide, it outlines the criteria that we use to determine the themes for the three schools. And for the first bullet, we talk about attracting to target market. I won't read through all the bullets on that long list, but I do want to point out the last two bullets. We'll have more information about those two when the regulations for the grant are released later this month.
So Tasha mentioned that in the survey that we sent to parents, that there is more interest in rural languages and language immersion. And so that's one of the rationales for the theme selection, along with students having the ability to develop proficiency in a second language, specifically Spanish and Chinese, as the immersion languages at the, at the three respective schools. Students being able to grow in their competence skills with intercultural awareness and developing a greater understanding of who they are as it relates to other people around the world. And another rationale is the increased academic performance. We, we've seen growth of at least 15% with our current language immersion elementary schools compared to their non, to their non-language immersion peers. And that was some of the information that we brought to the, to the Achievement Committee in November, talking about the successes in our, in our programs. Specifically for Dillard Drive Elementary, we're proposing that this school be the Center for World Languages and Spanish Immersion. It would be a full immersion program, so that noting that students could take their four core classes in Spanish if they were a part of the immersion cohort. So that would be their literacy, math, science, and social studies would be in Spanish daily. You know, one of the goals and one of the advantages of an immersion program is that students would be bilingual, bilinguine, and bicultural, just therefore giving them greater access after they graduate from high school and the ability to better communicate with people around the world. Additionally, as a part of the theme or the offerings, we plan to offer Spanish or French to students who are not in the immersion classes, so that students would be able to elect in kindergarten or at a younger year, if they were interested in taking a daily Spanish or a daily French. And this is separate from the students who commit to language immersion. And then also, we would give, create classes and provide students, provide teachers the opportunity to integrate global connections in their core and elective classes. Their, their non, their non-literacy classes are classes that are taught in the second language.
What do you envision as the cohort size for the Spanish immersion as a fraction of the student body population?
So we would like to keep it comparable to what we have now, so that we would have students from both the magnet and the base to be able, so an equal number of base and magnet students in the immersion program. So beginning in kindergarten.
Immersion to the non-immersion. I mean, I'm glad to see the Spanish and French offered for non-immersion students. My question, and I think, and that's a great idea, the base versus magnet becoming immersion. But my question was really the full immersion students versus the non-immersion students.
So two classes?
Yeah.
Again and again, kindergarten, then progressing up every year. Is that what you're asking?
Two classes of immersion or one immersion, one non-immersion?
Two classes of immersion.
Two classes of immersion.
Out of how many total classes?
We usually aim for about, at the other immersion schools, we aim for about half of the school to be immersion.
Okay.
Because these, all three of these schools, you can apply both to be an immersion or to be in the rural language part. That may be different, like immersion part might be maybe smaller, because more kids will come. So we can be flexible and then.
But your target is kind of a 50/50.
It's kind of a 50/50.
Okay.
At Dillard Drive Middle, we would continue rural languages and Spanish immersion. So obviously, the students at the Dillard Drive schools would be, have the opportunity to continue in their target language kindergarten through eighth grade. to continue in their target language kindergarten through eighth grade. Specific to the immersion part, students would be able to take their literacy course plus one additional course in that immersion language or in Spanish throughout sixth through eighth grade. Then we would also have the opportunity for global electives focusing on Spanish history and culture in all three grades. And then like at their elementary school students, teachers would have the opportunity to integrate global concepts into their learning and their electives or their other core classes.
So when we had talked about STOW, it's you start that immersion in kindergarten and then build up. So Dillard would not, Dillard Middle would not start with an immersion program in eighth grade or sixth grade. They would wait for that cohort from kindergarten to move up?
They wouldn't start immersion, so what you're saying is exactly correct, but they would have the opportunity for daily Spanish. The non-immersion students would still have daily Spanish or French, depending on which one they chose, beginning, you know, when the grant allows for us.
So it would open as a Center for Rural Languages and Spanish immersion would come when that cohort arrives in fifth grade?
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you.
Lastly, at East Cary Middle School would be our K-8 Center for Rural Languages and Chinese Immersion. Like was just mentioned, the Chinese immersion would begin in kindergarten and then progress every year with an additional grade level. It's also a full immersion program, so the students in the immersion classes would take their four core classes in Chinese every day. The goals would be the same, just focusing on a different language. Students would have the ability to be bilingual, bilingual, and bicultural in kindergarten through, or starting in kindergarten and growing throughout their elementary and middle school experience. So students, again, just like at the Dillard School, students could choose to participate in immersion or take a daily language, either in Spanish or Chinese. So there's something for everyone in our, in the magnet, in the magnet schools that we're proposing. And then also in middle school, students would take literacy plus one other core class in middle school immersion. Middle school immersion looks a little different than elementary immersion just by nature of the way the classes and the certification happens for teachers. And then their core and elective classes would be taught through a global lens as well.
The, this last slide is a timeline for the grant. So Wade mentioned at the beginning that we updated you on immersion in November at a student achievement meeting. Then in December, we found out about this grant. And then now, we're bringing those schools to you. In a couple of weeks, we'll get the final regulations. We don't expect a lot of changes from the present grant, but still, it will be reassuring to get those. Then February to mid-April, maybe even earlier in April, we'll work with the schools to develop the themes and logic models and write the grant. That's a very ambitious timeline. And then April, editing it and submitting it in early May. Then we find out if we receive the grant in late September. As I mentioned earlier, we get a hint if there's a good chance we're going to get it, if we get a call from the Office of Civil Rights in the summer to vet that part of the grant. And then the funding starts almost immediately from finding out on October 1. We'll do the major recruiting and marketing for the schools in October, November of this year for recruiting for students for the following year. Next year, for both of the, sorry, for both, all three of the schools, we'll be starting professional development, those kind of things, but we won't be implementing immersion next year. That would start that following year, so that's where the, and then one other piece that we didn't mention is as we've been presenting, the parents at all three of the schools got a letter just telling them that this was coming today, so they can read it in the paper first. And the principals sent an email to their faculty, and then they're meeting probably with their faculty right now to be able to share with them that it was coming today. They don't have all the answers yet, just like we don't, because we're still writing it, but they wanted to do that for their staffs and for parents.
Thank you.
I was just going to say, before we do take questions, the last thing I would just say is again, normally, we've given you a lot of information to consider, and normally that would have been broken into two meetings. We would have brought you proposed schools in the first meeting and gotten feedback about those schools and input from you. And then we would have brought later on, information relative to the themes. Due to the compressed timeline of this opportunity, we've, it's been, we're forced to bring the whole, kind of the whole preliminary package to you at once. So I know that's been a lot of information. We are certainly interested in getting feedback and hearing questions. And again, as Dr. Cockman shared, we had some, we had very positive principal meetings. We met with them and had gotten very, had very positive feedback from them and great interest in what this, what this opportunity could do for their school community. So we hope that their, their staffs are as equally as excited as well as the parent community, so that all of that information did happen simultaneously with our presentation to you. So we're very excited about this. So at this time, we'd love to answer any questions or take any feedback that we can.
Mr. Chairman, if you remember, last year, we had our retreat where we talked about some of our diversity work and some of our diversity goals. And after that retreat, I organized community meetings in my district to talk about some of the things we might do. And one of the biggest topics was the magnet program. In those meetings, and this is District 7, which is mostly, you know, high growth, very crowded schools, and also very high socioeconomic status, a lot of comments about magnet programs. There was a lot of good, positive discussion, and we asked about magnet themes. Language immersion was the top theme that came out of those meetings, Chinese and Spanish. There was a lot of praise for Jeffries Grove Elementary and the immersion program there. There were a lot of families from West Cary and Morrisville that expressed their dissatisfaction that they could not get into the programs because they were full. And I met one parent who lived in West Cary, but was going all the way to Hodge Road to participate in the program. So I believe there is strong parent demand in this area where we do have a lot of overcrowded schools and a lot of high socioeconomic families who might be willing to, you know, participate in the magnet program. Now, the other knock that we had on the magnet program, particularly from people who live, these families that were almost on the Durham County line, is how far they have to travel to get to the available magnet programs. And even though we can track it out and show that by the highways and transportation, it's really not that much longer, there's still a perception and the barrier that you have to go all the way to East Raleigh, you know, for some of these programs does keep some people from applying. And I think taking a school like in East Cary or Dillard Drive would result in getting a lot more applicants from these overcrowded, high socioeconomic, Western Wake schools and families, based on the meetings that I have. The other thing that I'll share is another thing that came out of some of those meetings is we have another school in that area, Hillburn Academy, which is a K-8. And so many of the Hillburn parents, and then parents at other schools will come to me and ask, how can we attract people to Hillburn? How can we get people into Hillburn? Because they like that K-8 program. But Hillburn's not an application school. But I think that there are a number of families that are interested in that type of programming that if you offered it as a magnet, that would be another draw. And I think we've got other areas of the county too, where I think a K-8 could be really, really helpful, where you have competition with charters and private school and some homeschool options. And so this could be a good opportunity to sort of see if the perceived demand for K-8 really is there. And then maybe we can export that around the county to some other areas. Overall, I'm very enthusiastic about the proposal, and I appreciate you bringing it.
So on the specifics of targeting in our applications, what percent of magnet seats are we expecting? What is our goal in the elementary and the middle?
So our goal for all three of these schools would be around 30, 30 to 40% because they'd be like, you know, a group two magnet category. I know in a couple of weeks, we're going to talk more with everybody about that, but it would be about 30 to 40%. That's not going to happen overnight. And, you know, space limitations, even though that's our goal, you know, may not happen. And some of them, they easily could, but others, they may not. But that's the goal.
And then in Durant Elementary, in order to be completely transparent, 102% capacity. How are we opening up magnet seats there?
And Durant?
You mean, what do you mean?
I mean, Dillard. What did I say? Durant. Oh, yeah. We do have some offices at Durant. But no, Dillard. I'd say, how will we, how, I want to know, how are we opening up our magnet seats in an overcrowded school?
So I think in that case, what we're looking at is the number of students who are attending the school now, either as a calendar option or as a transfer. There are a number of students in the school that are not base students to that school.
Okay, that's good.
So there are already some mechanisms that we could use to look at that.
And so what would we, how would we address our transfer students that are there?
Well, they're already there, right? So we're starting with kindergarten. We don't go whole, we don't go, so it would move forward one grade level at a time.
Okay. I have one other question. You go first.
No, no, go ahead. You're on a roll.
I have not on a roll. So when you start a magnet program, especially one as, it is this, I'm excited about it. Usually, the principals of those schools need to be very bought in. I mean, oftentimes, we hire specifically for a magnet that's been very successful in the past. How do we assure that these are the right principals for those programs?
I'll take that one too. So yes, it is often the case with brand-new magnets that we have to make a decision for the entire staff at the school. You may have a principal who may not want to do that, or teachers who may not want to do that. So we provide an opportunity where the staff, the teachers, we take a look at it and decide, you know, we've done sort of a wholesale application sort of process, indicate interest, I want to learn more. So that's part of the work that will happen over the next few months as well, if we bring this as a full-on proposal, to determine what are the changes or opportunities for ins and outs that will need to occur at the school, at all levels.
So we'll be sure that we're looking for the skills we need to make this a very successful magnet?
We're going to want matches and desire.
Yes. Okay, good.
I can tell you, I've talked specifically to Dillard Drive Elementary School principal, and she is excited as I'll get out. She's coming from Washington, so knows a lot about magnet programs as well.
But she has the skills.
She has the skills. She's absolutely excited. I believe the same is true for the Dillard Drive Middle School principal. I haven't talked to her specifically about this issue. I can't say but-
But she was at an application school prior to Dillard.
She was. She was a young one.
I'm actually thinking about the program, not the fact that it's written in the program.
Right, but even, so I know they're excited about the program.
But you're right.
Yeah.
Thank you. And do we expect, talking about teachers, do we expect the teachers who'll be coming from Participate? Do they have the capacity to provide us with the teachers we need?
Since we have, and I'll let Sharon jump in if I don't say it right, since we have the year of planning, then we have that year, there'll be teachers that are leaving for various reasons, you know, probably none related to the grant, and then they would hire, the immersion teachers especially, have to come from a Participate. And then even the rural language positions, we would, I mean, you know, you wouldn't have to get Spanish or French from Participate. We could, but you wouldn't have to. The immersion, we do have to get.
Chinese and to them.
Right. And looking at STOW and Jeffries Grove and Hodge Road, I'd be interested in knowing, are we going to be able to also enhance their curriculum to allow for the non-immersion students to have that more global education in those schools as well? Would we be able to leverage the magnet grant for professional development to also enhance those schools? And Daniel's, you know, feeding on the pathway of the immersion schools that we already have?
We've talked about that a lot in our office as we're writing this grant. I guess we look at it as that this could be models for those schools, like the immersion part of their schools are going to be models for these schools, but the rural languages part can perhaps be models for their schools of something we can work towards for them locally over time, because it would take additional additions for rural languages for non-immersion students at those schools. The global programming, I mean, we could certainly look at all schools benefiting.
But I mean, as we look at attracting magnet parents and families, I think it's, immersion is something that we can't do at all of our schools, so it makes really great sense to have that as a magnet program. But again, to be able to attract families and keep those schools vibrant, I think enhancing across their curriculum would be a great attraction for them.
And if someone moves in at second grade and they want a magnet and they want language, they may not come from an immersion background, so they're able to get the exposure.
Right. Because that's what we found, Jeffries Grove and STOW, and to some extent, Hodge Road, there's no on-ramp for a magnet unless you get to choose that magnet, unless you come in kindergarten, you can't be in immersion. But it would be great to be able to have on-ramps for other parents to choose those schools.
So with East Cary, you know, going from a middle school to a K-8, what are, I mean, there's going to be some facility modifications that have to happen over the summer, because yes, there are classrooms, but a kindergarten classroom and a middle school classroom look very different from each other, you know, plumbing, what have you. What kinds of facility modifications are we looking at for that program in particular, given the facility that's there now and what we need for an elementary to come in?
So I'll respond to that, and I apologize to Ms. Parker for not introducing her as a part of my team early in the beginning, but as this idea became a reality in terms of bringing this proposal forward, Ms. Parker, in collaboration with Facilities Design and Construction, did a preliminary feasibility study to look specifically at the number of instructional spaces, what that process would take in order to take that existing facility. One of the unique pieces of that campus is it has some unique, it has some specific buildings. It's not all in one. So I think that that plan, based on what they've, they've been able to look at using our current existing standards to be sure that in this conversion, they're not getting less in terms of how that would work out, was we had ample instructional space and felt like it would be a project that could be completed over the course of a summer, so it wouldn't have to interrupt instructional time, it wouldn't have to interrupt the current operations at East Cary as we face that in and get ready for that 21-year.
And I will say, as someone who's done elementary and middle school language, I'm very excited about this, on both the exposure and the immersion parts. And I know Dr. Martin has said as well, that foreign language, rural language should be a part of every child's experience. So the fact that we're able to expand this, I think, is a great opportunity for our students.
Yeah, a couple of questions. Very excited about the world languages, yeah. I'm absolutely convinced that languages are the 21st century skill that we need to be teaching, so very excited about these programs. My first question really is building off of, I was going to ask kind of the same thing that you did, Lindsay. Going K-8 from an elementary school to a middle school, I think, is physically easier than a middle school to an elementary school. And so I appreciate that that work is somewhat being done. It's also not a surprise that, I personally am not a big fan of K-8, because I know middle school is a challenging time, but I think learning to deal with that transition actually builds, if we do it right, builds capacity in our students. I'd really appreciate if we'd look at our longer-term success of K-8 programming, to see how that, you know, is that really something that we should be pursuing and to what degree not? I mean, there is a popular aspect in choice of K-8, oftentimes because of an apprehension of the transition. But if we build skills of transition effectively, we actually empower our students. Related to that and the facility issue, my question is, Adams Elementary is just right around the corner from East Cary, not unlike the two Dillards. Have we considered doing a Adams East Cary very much like Dillard Elementary, Dillard Middle? A, that would give us capacity to reach more students. I believe it would give you the potential benefits of the K-8 that could be a value, but still build in that transition, which can also is valuable to our students. So it has not been looked at at all, because no, Adams is not an overcrowded school either.
No, it's full.
It's full, but it's a little bit like a Dillard Elementary issue.
Well, I think, so we've just recently made some changes in both of those schools with regards to attendance areas, feeder patterns, and calendar. So we now have Adams with a multi-track year-round calendar, and East Cary with the traditional calendar. We've changed the feeder pattern for those at Adams Elementary to other multi-track year-round schools. So in order, we, I think we made a decision that, trying to flip back things around that we had just flipped around for the time being, that we should leave what the decisions that we had made in place. And I think there was sentiment that while not something that we necessarily have the capacity or desire to do district-wide, K-8 programming in one location is attractive to a large number of our families, and to have it located in another part of the county other than the one that we have right now, we felt like we were large enough to have the capacity for that to be of interest to sufficient families that we could fill it.
But still, yes, to look at the bigger scope of it. My second question- My second question is, as you know, in my discussions about magnet programming, I'm concerned, and concerned in a constructive way, that our magnet programming has heavily emphasized programming to experienced, rich families, to have them come to schools where we need capacity. And yet, if we look at the needs across the county, we have a lot of families coming from experienced, non-rich settings. And I guess my continued question is, how do we create those opportunities? If I look at these, the East Cary and the Dillards, yes, they're above the county average, but they're not, they're not the high-poverty schools like some others. And so I'm wondering, in the selection process, could we begin the process of creatively looking at, you know, I've got kids coming from low-wealth areas. How might they be able to access this kind of magnet programming? Not quite our 2A, but maybe 2A-like, because again, I believe that this kind of language instruction is the key to success in the future. And so I just, I wonder about, in our magnet selection process, can we be creative in thinking about, yeah, we want to bring some high SES in, but maybe we want to creatively bring some low SES in? Because if we can stay at the percentages that we're sort of at, we're kind of, these schools are still kind of in the okay range. So can we bring in some from both sides and let it be a start of providing opportunity to, I mean, I hate to say opportunity for students, but the reality is there are students who come from opportunity-poor settings. How do we get, how do we make that opportunity be part of our magnet program? And I think that fits with the themes of the grant.
For the grant, we couldn't do that. Grant, we couldn't do it.
To increase in diversity.
Locally, we could. I mean, the way that we're providing programming for the lower socioeconomic students is most of our magnet schools, especially the Group Ones, and like a Hodge and several of our other magnets in Eastern Wake are in high-poverty areas. That all the students at the school get access to. So I think ongoing, like the 2A was, was and is definitely an effort to do, just like you're saying, in an opposite way, and it's been fairly successful doing it at the schools that we have it for. But for the grant, the grant, that would be hard to put them into the grant, but locally...
Yeah. If I could just expand upon that. Yeah, but going back to the grant consideration or on the impact on the surrounding schools that are in the draw area. So what you're talking about would require deeper analysis and really strategic sort of locating, because you're having, because where that school is, you have to make sure that it doesn't negatively impact the draw area of schools around it in order to be competitive to get the federal grant. That's why we also look at locally funding magnets where we have need, programming need and desire, and that's something that we can run parallel to this process. And if there is a location, a school, a scenario that makes sense for what you're talking about, that could be grant-funded, I think we could take a look at that for, because we got another grant-funding cycle that comes in 2022. So that we will be right on top of that one, too.
Knowing where Dillard is and where its draw is from, it's close to being able to do what we're talking about. That's partly why I bring it up right here, because it's got a socioeconomic balance that we could work with, and it's positioned already that it has draw from a couple of different areas. I mean, Dillard Middle draws from some toward Garner, Southeast Raleigh, but it also draws from Lockmere, so it already has some of that draw. And so I just think that it potentially has, it may be that position where we could do some of this work.
I think it's also why we're looking at the world languages for all students as an option in these schools also.
Absolutely.
We're trying to ensure as we're moving forward with these magnet programs that it is, that they're, you know, we want our schools to be magnets for everyone that's there, and for all of the students that are to experience those additional learning opportunities.
Thank you. I apologize for being late today. I have a professional obligation that I could not get out of if I wanted to remain in my profession.
We forgive you.
I'm here. Sorry I missed this presentation, so if I'm asking a question that's been answered, please tell me. Not far from the East Cary location, we have a high-impact IB primary years program. Is there an opportunity for students moving up from that program to have a middle school experience at East Cary as well? Right now, their middle school experience is on the other side of Raleigh.
We can look at that, see what those numbers look like.
Not wanting to cannibalize Farmington Woods. What's the opportunity for those students moving into the school? I think they will also meet the magnet goal.
Good idea.
Thank you.
Could you explain a little bit more about, in the grant, on Slide 10, where grant considerations are explained, and the identified schools will not negatively impact surrounding schools? What exactly does that mean? What does surrounding schools mean?
It means schools within somewhat of it, like, so if we were, take an Eastern Wake, like, so if we did something with, say, Eastern Wake Middle School, and that hurt, or an elementary, but we can talk about middle school, and that hurt other middle schools in Eastern Wake because of trying to attract the higher socioeconomic, because that's the goal with the grant, is try to attract the opposite diversified school.
So just like geographically close proximity? Or does it mean any schools? I'm just thinking of some of our schools right now that are impacted by the number of magnet students in that base area.
You mean present magnet students that are leaving that area?
Correct. That are leaving schools.
Overall, the selection priorities are set up so that that's only in the 10% that that should be happening, but there could be some long-term effects of siblings and those kind of things that are impacting, but otherwise. And then, and then, of course, the GT pathway takes them to end though is a high school, which is something we are going to talk about.
But from the Eastern Wake schools, they offer the GT pathway now?
Right. In elementary and middle, and then their high school is in one, so a long-term solution could be looking at in Eastern Wake.
But it is geographical, Ms. Scott, in terms of what the draw area is that is identified for the school.
Okay. Thank you. And then for the number six, on that same page, it says, "will be selected by some kind of lottery process." Could you, because I, I'm sure other board members received this question, I'm sure you all do as well, when people want to know, why can't it just be an open lottery? And I know you've explained that, but you know why it's just not a complete lottery for, you know, when, can you explain a little bit more about that process? Because I think there are still many people who don't understand the way that works.
So if you have open lottery, you can't guarantee that you're going to try to diversify the schools, right? Because everybody that applied could be the same as people in the base or not, and so a total open lottery doesn't guarantee you diversity, which for the federal grant, that's definitely what they're looking for in Wake County, is also ongoing and looking for that based on the magnet principles. But that's what it means, and we just have the 10%, like at any magnet seats at any school, there are 10% that are total open lottery, just so that everybody does have a chance to get in at that 10%. But after that, then it's really strict selection criteria to try to meet the goals of the grant in our Wake County.
I appreciate that. I think there's, that's a matter of confusion to many people when they, and not, I think most people don't know which schools are funded by grants and which magnet schools are locally funded, and so that might go into the confusion about that as well, when they're wondering why they fall into a particular category for the lottery process. And the last question I had, going off with, when Ms. Mahaffey asked, what is this going to look like from a cost perspective to convert East Cary into a K-8 school? I'd really like to know as close as possible to what that would look like from a financial perspective, and how that conversion will be funded, because that's going to be hard for a lot of people to swallow, to see, even though we know, we've heard the discussion, why those programs are needed, where they're needed, how they'll be fulfilling the needs of the grant. But for many people who live in parts of the county that are struggling with that, and I know there were two bullet points that said there's more coming, but that's going to be hard for many people to stomach, to be perfectly blunt. And so I'd really like that to be described more just for the sake of transparency, so people can understand where and how much, where that funding will come from and how much that will be. I think that's important to share with the community.
So I think, I think Wade has done some of that work with Betty, and if I'm not mistaken, jumping if you need to, this would fall under the SNAP category that we currently have in place. You remember SNAP was a separate line item of funding where we are looking to respond to a need or an opportunity that comes up that isn't necessarily part of a seven-year plan. That's the whole purpose of SNAP. And so in this particular case, we have some other SNAP projects that are either, they're moving at a different pace, or they have generated some savings. An example would be the Middle Creek Transportation Center, that because it is no longer there and it's now going to be in another space that's already built out, there were significant savings identified there, so that has freed up some SNAP funds from our plan that we have right now, that now become available to use for another opportunity that has come up. And in this case, it would be what's needed at East Cary in order to prepare it to be a K-8 school. What do I know?
When might we have a budget?
We don't have a budget today.
I understand. I mean, when might we have a ballpark?
I guess he's requesting that.
Correct. We will be bringing this back on the 18th for hopeful approval. At that point, Betty and her team will be taking this preliminary study and working with the facility planning and design to get some hard numbers from Mr. Roof and his team.
Well, it's all on one level, so that's a start.
And then, just one, one last thing, and I'll stop. We all know that there are many magnet programs right now that also need, that need some help. And this, we have to do this, this is good work to, you know, make use of this grant, but I think that we also need to, to be open with, with what's the plan for helping some of these magnet schools in southeastern Raleigh, and what is the plan to help those? And I know that's discussed, but I think, again, when we're doing something like this, we also owe it to the community to say, we know your schools need some assistance, and here's the plan for that. So I would just like to also request that's something else that be considered as part of a presentation.
And I think with, next month during the, or this month, on the 18th meeting, the facilitated RTI conversation, magnet is the focus. So we'll be bringing information relative to that question right there specifically at that time as well. So I think you'll get a more comprehensive look at that internal review process.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The question that I just thought of was, as we're talking about feeders, you know, for students who are in the immersion program, what high school will they feed into? As students who are magnet but maybe not immersion, where will they feed into? And our base students who have had all of this exposure to world language? Where will they end up, and what will we have available at the high school level? If they're in a French or a Chinese program, are we making sure that those base high schools have French or Chinese so that they can, if they'd like, continue their, their language studies? What have we looked at as far as pathways?
Well, currently, the plan is for the high school that's been designated as a language immersion school is Broughton. And so they do have, and that's where the Daniels kids feed to, who are part of the immersion program. So they will be well-equipped to provide the needed instruction or the level instruction for students who do the daily Spanish or French or Chinese, as well as the immersion classes. We're building that a little bit, right? Because there's not a high school immersion sort of program model out there for us to co-opt or learn from. But we've got the kids at Daniels now that have just started there, and so we're, and we know that, and that's a feeder too, Broughton. So we're sort of building it out as we move forward in collaboration with the folks from Participate. So because they are a few years ahead, I think it'll help us with how we identify what happens here as they move forward also.
And then transportation, too, Broughton, for a lot of the area that we've talked about as a potential draw for East Cary and for the Dillards, that's parent provide. And so working with transportation to see what, what magnet transportation would look like. I'd like to know a little bit more of what we're thinking on the 18th, just so we can have, if they're going to start with us in magnet, let's see how they can continue with us in magnet if they so choose, and that we give them the opportunity to stay with us, and it's not, well, this is great, but now that we're going to ninth grade, I can't drive my kids to downtown Raleigh because I work in RGP.
Certainly, we'll get with Bob and his team to create some options of what that may look like.
Am I hearing that we think that Broughton will be able to handle all of this?
That was my next question.
It feels to me like Broughton works well for Daniels, but it's going to take time for these programs to grow. We don't need high school tomorrow, but I think we've got to be thinking about something more than just Broughton.
Yeah, I do.
Yeah.
I already mentioned the name of this.
So Dr. Martin touched on all of my initial comments, so I just have one question, so I have one left. Now I have a whole lot about the high school feeder, but you'll deal with that later. So my initial question was pretty simple, and that is, to me, as somebody who writes grants, and I get that this is an opportunity, and I read it before you all spoke, so this, I still want to ask a question. It feels like we're squeezing this to fit a grant application. So my struggle is, yes, I think we need all these things, however, if it's not funded, so the question, the barometer for me is, if it's not funded, then would we do it? And would we feel like we should invest local funds to do this? Because otherwise, again, I'm not mad that we're squeezing to try to fit a grant, but my struggle is, we have magnet schools, which I agree with, Ms. Scott, that are struggling. And so personally, it is hard for me to say, oh, we're going to create all these new programs, and I still have to go back and tell families, oh, but your magnet school's still struggling. So for me, I don't know who Ms. Scott was talking about, it's hard for me to digest that we'd be moving on to new programs, which is great and exciting, but we're still leaving the same group of kids behind. So I know when you write a grant, that's not what you think about, but I guess for me, I have to say, I couldn't sit at the table and not say it. Like, I scratched through it a couple times.
We're all...
But I can't sit at the table and not say that that's what this feels like to me, is it's a great opportunity, we're going to create some magnet programs, and you magnet schools are still struggling. And I get you can't tell the magnet office, hey, we need to actually reinvest over here because of this, but it's just hard. It's hard for me to swallow.
So part of the reason for picking immersion for this grant is, especially for Spanish immersion, if we don't get the grant, we probably won't be able to do the Center for World Languages near at the level, or maybe at all, but the immersion we could move forward with, because technically, it doesn't take additional teaching positions, it's just different teaching positions. So that was part of the strategy, so if we don't get it. And then I think the other part is, and I have a slide number off the top of my head, but like about the second or third slide of the revised magnets, I mean, I do want to remind everybody that in this grant that we're in right now, 2017 to 22, three of the four schools are revisions.
Yeah, I think, I went back, somebody actually, may have been Kathy, somebody responded to that in our email.
Bug, Milbrook, I mean, we're talking magnets, we have Bug, Bug, Milbrook Elementary, Southeast Raleigh High School, and then Lincoln Heights was the only new in there, so...
And that's kind of revision.
Yeah. And I would predict in 2022, we probably would be looking, you know, based on the feedback in, even as we prepare, some of the revised magnets, but this just seemed like an opportunity that if we didn't get it, we could still make it happen on a small, small scale with immersion without a ton of additional funds.
So I'm going to muddy the waters even a little further, because I get it, and I hear what you're saying. But I guess my base question is, is it the magnet that fixes the school, or is it the type of magnet that fixes the school? Or is it both, and we just got to figure it out? Which, which I'm fine if that's what the answer is. But I'm asking because, again, I went back, actually, because Heather, Ms. Scott asked a question in email, we've got the email again, in this slide, and I guess that's still my question, is at the end of the day, when I looked at your data point, that 15% growth when we have language immersion or kids are taking the language, that's great. Again, I have to keep asking myself... Again, I have to keep asking myself, because these are the constant conversations that are happening in our community. Well, then if you know that, then why don't you put language at the school that's struggling? I have to ask these questions because those are the questions that we are asking, and also the questions I don't have an answer to. So I guess that's my question, is when we think about revising, if you're telling me that you think that this is the winning magnet program, then why wouldn't we put it at the schools that have been struggling as long as I've been on the board? Because it's been the exact same group of magnet schools for six years that have been struggling.
That's, that's the question I have.
I'm going to stop now.
I just, I think, I think it's like you said, I mean, it's the program and it's the location together.
All of that.
And so when you combine them, maybe it makes sense. If you had different locations, it may not be as strong.
I don't, I don't either, and that's why I just asked the question. So don't expect like a crystal clear question.
No, but we do have to get to answer because we can't leave those struggling.
No.
Mr. Chan?
This was like, yes, thank you, Monique.
I do think, I do think you're absolutely right. We've got to figure out for all of those magnets that are not working, if we, if we determine that there's a program that's moving a needle, not just in choice, but in what's happening with student achievement, is that programming that we need to look at extending? Yes. I do think we're in the second year of immersion in middle school, so it's just reached middle school. And so, you know, we've gotten the five years now, or six years now out of elementary. So there's still a little, little proving ground for us. But as Beth said, I think 2022 is a really good litmus test for exactly what you're talking about also, in terms of balancing also within a magnet grant, what's revisions and what's new? Because I think they want to see both. They're not, you know, if you just do revised magnet themes, that's not quite as competitive as expanding your magnet program. So you want to look at both.
Yeah. And I get grants, unfortunately, I support federal grants, so I, so I ask that in the confines of understanding that it is a grant and it is competitive, that you might not get it. However, as a board member, it's my job to still ask those questions.
And the grant, is there opportunity for, I guess I'll think of two pieces, revision, which would be revising, I think, then enhancement, which is kind of strengthening what's already there. So are there opportunities for revision and enhancement, or is it only new?
So there's, there's new, like, there's new, that's the easy part. Then there's revised, but I think you were making a distinction between revised and enhanced, right? Like maybe not totally a struggling magnet.
That's what I see, but I don't know if that's their definition, but I think two different things, I think revised and then enhanced.
Right. They, they make distinction just between new and then revised. They don't make like another distinction for enhancement.
So are there funds in that or revision?
Yes. Like, and those, those schools out there are all provide, that were part of grants that are all revising, revising their things. Like we changed the thing at Southeast, Bug and Milbrook, it just is past grant.
When we think about a, when we say it's not working, or a, a magnet being successful, is that, are we measuring student achievement or proficiency at those schools? Or are we measuring the purposes of the grant, which is?
Applications.
Integration, that is balancing that sort of thing, because that's, that would then be a different measure. So when we, I'm just kind of criticizing, we talk about magnets or schools being successful or needing worse, that's based on which measure?
We use measurements for, which we're going to talk in detail with you at the RTI on the 18th, but, you know, we use, the federal grant does use student achievement as well as all of the, like, they're looking to see if you're changing socioeconomic makeup of the school, or looking to see if you're changing the demographic makeup of the school. So therefore, they're looking at your magnet applications at the school. And then, as I said, the federal government is looking at student achievement as well.
And that, and is the time period for that the same as a length of the grant cycle?
Yes. And locally, we'd be looking at all of those things as well.
I think one of the things that came up in a conversation recently is how we might provide some more frequent reporting to the board of the markers of what our expectations are around, what are our goals for magnets, and how are they meeting them, and that sort of thing. So that, we'll talk more about that, I think, probably on the 18th as well.
So with that conversation, I'm assuming we're good, was that a thumbs up? Because I'm, I'm sure staff is looking for direction in terms of moving forward on, on these, even though we're hearing concern about where we leave office and knowing that more work is done, but it needs to be done.
I think we need, on the 18th, to have some of those concerns addressed with some specifics and what, you know, locally funded options might be, what the next grant cycle, 22 to 27, might be for some of those concerns. Maybe a seven-year plan for some of the magnets. Maybe that's part of our discussion with RTI as well, as a board.
Okay. I think it would be helpful to probably include that as part of, or a segment, it could be separate from what you do on the RTI, but what are, what are, I think the plan was to bring a decision on these three to go ahead and say, we're going, and, you know, we're still doing the work with the school and the parents and the teachers and all of that, but, but if, if everything continues to go well, then we would be bringing a recommendation to the board on the 18th for these three schools to be in the next magnet grant cycle that is due this spring.
Where do they look in the big picture, I think? Where do they fit in a bigger picture about some of the concerns I think that have been raised today?
I also heard a request for some sort of preliminary budget.
Right. Okay.
And I guess some sense to it, I think I heard is, if the grant doesn't go forward, then.
What does that look like?
What does that look like? And I guess how much we would be on the hook for.
Yep. Because it would be a local cost.
Because looking at the timeline, we're saying, late September, we find out if we're receiving a grant, but then right next month, the magnet fair, so that one was pretty much both be then at that point, so.
Right. That happens every time we have a magnet grant cycle. There are some commitments that you make locally that are like the minimum commitments that you need to run whatever you decide is going to happen, whether you get the grant or not. And then the, the grant can come in and enhance, promote, supersize, be the full sort of enchilada. I'm mixing my memory.
Some thinking or then a plan too for the, what's happening with the others.
Okay.
To Dr. Cockrake's point, adding the immersion or not could be minor cost differential if we have to do it locally. Converting a middle school to a K-8 is going to come with a bigger price tag. So that timeline I'd like to see.
But it would add, with the, the thing that, that I noticed about East Carey is if you look at the elementary schools in, that surround it, and especially even further west, there is a lot of crowding. And so if we can pull from that area to help reduce crowding in the west, so we're having, you know, less capping out of students, and your immersion programs at Dillard and East Carey, immersion is not subject to K-3 class size, I think that that helps. And so that's, that's kind of the benefit that I'm seeing, but knowing full well that there is that cost of, you know, putting in cubbies and bathrooms and egress and.
That's the big picture to, to Monique's point, that, right? What dollars are we investing where, when we have lots of needs? Right? There are times where, as a researcher, I don't submit a grant because it detracts from my core mission. I don't think that's where we are.
We call it mission-driven work.
Yeah, right. I don't think that's where we are, but it's something we have to be conscious about with the opportunities to.
Yes.
All right. Thank you all.
Thank you, sir.
So now we got four to five minutes.
So I think we're revising some, some cappings.
Oh, the EZPZ.
Recommendation of questions that came back.
We didn't get these materials today, so that would have.
Well, there you go.
Yeah. This is just the Wade Martin show thing. Got you. Go on. Which presentation do we look at, sir? Of the four? Just, just, just pick one. Okay. Just pick one and open it. Thank you. Good advice.
I can't.
I know.
What's going on?
There's four documents.
How did you come back? Why did you not stay in?
Do you know which one of the files that says? There's one that says we're.
The first one in the upper left is what?
The first one in the upper left.
Has a presentation.
Thank you.
Yeah. I can forward it to you. I'm just looking at, just conceptually.
We just need a safety face.
We have 17 articles. Ritz Agency, a article.
There it is. It's impressive.
Effect better standardization.
Remember how Laura events at Austin Ridge and Horns Creek was EZPZ, right? God bless her. She meant it.
All right. Here we are again. I've moved seats. We're excited to bring you revised capping recommendations. We had the opportunity to present these draft recommendations back on January 15th to the Facility Committee. We were able to get some really great input and feedback from board members. Since that time, we have continued to engage with our principals and various superintendents and elder staff to be sure that we had the most comprehensive review of these recommendations moving forward. So today, with me, Mr. Caroza, with the Office of Student Assignment, and Ms. Lighthall with Long Range Planning, will present the revised recommendations since we met on the 15th. Before we look at what we're recommending, just, this is a, a review here of, of our current schools, the 18th Elementary, or Middle, and two high schools that were capped from last year up until this point.
Do we have an idea how many of these elementary schools would be crowded but not necessarily capped if it wasn't for K-3 class size?
Off the top of my head?
At least.
Six or seven?
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Six or seven K-3, just need it worse, but they would still, the high growth, they would probably still need to cap.
Still.
My brand new clicker, I see we work sporadically. You may recognize this particular slide. This was actually from Glenn's earlier enrollment plan presentation. And during the work session, the facility work session, one of the board members asked for a little more context in terms of these capping recommendations. We highlight this particular Western Wake area, and this was actually back in September. So in, in talking with Mr. Caroza, actually, I believe, two additional schools, which would be the Blue Triangles, that were under 100% crowding at that time, are now are over. And two of the schools that you see that were at 100% capacity are two of the schools that we're bringing to you today as recommendations to, to cap. So even since the start of this school year, crowding concerns have continued to grow. But I think that's a, a unique graphic that really drives home the point of how, how dire it is in certain areas in terms right now, the, the capacity concerns. So with, from the last presentation, we continue to recommend that these five particular schools, Baileywood Elementary School, Fuquay Elementary, Vance, Willow Springs, and Yates Mill, that we discontinue their cap. Two of these schools, Fuquay Barina and Willow Springs, are a part of the opening, are positively affected by the opening of South Lakes Elementary School, and, and as a part of the last assignment plan, and therefore will have capacity to be able to remove that cap. The other schools, as you can see, after careful examination of their facilities and conversation with principal, they have open space, they have the capacity to lift that cap and still meet the needs of their base student population. So we felt, we felt good about these recommendations. Since our last discussion, we, we do bring to you recommendation to, to additional schools based on conversation with board members, further conversations with staff at schools to lift the cap on Harris Creek Elementary School, as well as Panther Creek High School. These factors here, we reviewed previously, and, and these remain unchanged. I do want to highlight the, the one bullet that's in red, and we've added some additional information to further emphasize the, kind of the points that when we talk about when a school has used all of its means to accommodate students, and what, what do we really look at? So we've added a couple of slides. So one of the things that we look at is obviously to, to be able to accommodate students that live in the base prior to the cap. Because as you know, when a school is capped, any family that lived, that domiciled in their house before that, that the cap was put in place, is eligible to attend that, that school. So even with, even when you have a capped school, that doesn't mean that, that only impacts any new family that moves in once that cap is put in place. We obviously look at the programs, have, have instructional spaces that are converted to try to gain capacity, as, as we've had earlier conversations, the first floor egress issues that we find in some of our facilities. Number of co-teaching classrooms, as well as combo classrooms, as, as we've worked to, and as the board has heard in earlier presentations around strategies that we're using to accommodate the K-3 class size legislation, co-teaching, some combination classes, other means like that have been employed by, by school staff to meet the, the needs of their, of their campus. At some point though, they've kind of, they begin to exceed those options in terms of how they can best manage that, that growth and capacity. Obviously, one of the, the close factors that we look at in relation to our elementary schools is really the, the K-3 class size. And as that, as a kindergarten class transitions up through those grades, can, can the, the facility itself accommodate the changes as, as that cohort of students moves through the school? Obviously, at the elementary level, again, we look at the number of capped out students in a particular grade. Unlike the high schools where, in secondary schools, when they have a cap, it's, it's based on a number. It's not, whereas at the elementary school, even though a school may have a cap on their school with a total number, we, we allow students to enroll in order to maximize the use, if they have seats in the third grade, for example, they may have exceeded, they may be capped out in terms of their kindergarten first. If they have seats in third grade, because they have a teacher that has open, open space, then we do, we do allow that, that school. The principal, working with the data manager, works with that family, they have capacity at that particular grade. So the elementaries work a little bit differently. And then one of the things that you've heard Glenn, as we talk about school capacity, as well as Ms. Lighthall, we, we take a close look at what trends are we seeing around the percentage of, of families that are assigned to the base that are attending that school. In certain, in certain areas of the county, we have very high percentages of base, attending their base school. They're, they're not opting for magnet, they're not opting for other choice that the district or the family may have available to them. And so we look at that trend over time to help us anticipate, you know, it's difficult
If we have, just because, but specifically to Panther Creek High School, just because we now have an enrollment slightly less than what the cap was, I don't think that justifies taking off the cap and then seeing any additional growth push us back over what that cap number was. And then do we come back and recap?
That's what they said last time.
Well, this is, this is why I wanted to do my due diligence and ask questions about it. We didn't really get the question answered. We wanted more time to go and talk about it and find out what those issues are. And, you know, what we find in talking to community, like what Roxy was just saying, sorry, Ms. Cash was just saying.
Hi, I'm Roxy.
About what parents think. If you cap the kids, they get overflowed, they get to a school, they like the overflow, now you call them back, well, they either have to leave the high school that they're at or they lose their transportation. I mean, there's a lot of issues with the capping, the overflow that bothers our community. But here, if you have a school that was built originally for capacity of seventeen hundred and fifty kids, it's accommodated up to a thousand more kids, more than a thousand more kids, just because we know we can put them in there, you know, again, capacity with trailers, it's only ninety-nine percent full, that's still for, about, I don't know the math, about at least forty percent more capacity than the cafeteria was intended to handle, than the auditorium, the gym, the parking lot, and all of the rest of the school infrastructure. So it just, you know, I know that we don't have the capital facilities to house all of the students that we would like to at the ratios that we want. And I know that we have to put more students into available schools close to their communities. And so that pushes the stress and the strain. But we have this cap here that will protect Panther Creek from getting above that, above that number that the community, past staff, past parents, current parents are saying is too crowded as it is. And your original recommendation was to keep the cap. And again, I really feel that, you know, we had questions about the cap. We wanted to go out and talk to the community about it. Staff in the community have been very diligent and very helpful in answering those questions. And so, you know, with those questions answered, I don't see any reason to change your original recommendation, and I hope that the recommendation wasn't changed just because we had questions about it. But that's where I stand on the issue. I've heard from, again, numerous people in the community about it, and I think, I think we need to keep that school to reasonable enrollment.
I think as we, as we looked at their existing situation, I think that the unknown for us was growth in the area. And we did try to take a much deeper look to see, was that going to be immediate, meaning in the next year or so, or was it spread out a little bit more over time? It wasn't crystal clear. So looking and based on some of the concerns that were shared, we factored that in. We did speak with, you know, some stakeholders as well. And it was on the bubble. As you said, it could go either way. We looked into as well the idea that there was not any plan, at least in the next calendar year, to remove any of the existing capacity through the modules and took that into consideration. We are certainly open to...
Further discussion.
Further discussion.
Mr. Fletcher, have a standup.
I was fairly vocal in our committee meeting about why should we maintain the cap. And I've been part of the due diligence conversations as well. And the community...
And then what does future growth in that area look like? And then as we look at the possibility of a calendar change, the factors that we would try to look at and examine. And obviously, the other option that we have been working to avoid through some of these capping conversations is the reassignment of students. So this would be the kind of the sequence and flow that staff is looking at and is gathering data around. So I just wanted to share that was brought up in terms of what really is the process. And so I wanted to include that for your review. One of the things that we did talk about last time was the cost implications and really the impact is really on transportation. With one change from the overflow recommendations, last time it was five additional bus routes. That has expanded to six as we've again tried to spread around the impact on overflow schools that will now require one additional bus. And as Mr. Nader highlighted last time with the transportation staff, that impact on student ride times. So our recommendation would be to adopt these capping recommendations. We'll bring that as an action item for the meeting. The newly capped recommendations would go into effect immediately. Schools that were recommended to be removed, their cap is actually lifted for the 2021 enrollments. So that's not an immediate thing. And I'll give you the reason that is. For example, with Fuquay as well as Willow Spring, we're able to remove that cap because South Lakes is going to be opening. But South Lakes is not open yet. So what I would say is if there is capacity, as new families move in and the board has recommended that that school's cap be removed, if there is capacity, we'll work with those schools to call back students as well as to allow enrollments. But in general, the cap would be formally lifted for 2021 for next school year.
Ms. Cash.
So the capping is a problem for us. But another problem, we need, I don't know when we're going to talk about this for sure, but when we bring our kids back to our schools as they're capped out and we call them back, we need to talk about that because that's created quite a problem for the board. Because if we're going to cap them out and call them back and then reassign right after that, I don't think that's a real good way to address it for our public. I think we need to look forward on the assignment plan before we start. Possibly when we're bringing kids back, I'm cognizant of the idea that we have a transportation pattern, but I'm more concerned about the parents' stability and the kids' stability than I am about how many buses we're carrying in now. Because I think we're sending a mixed message. When we let kids back in with capping, that's been capped out, we let them in, and then we reassign right after that, it's coming trouble for the board. So how we address calling our kids back when they're capped out, I think the board needs to have a large discussion about.
Well said. And I think when you're capped out, you are a little hesitant to form a community at the capped school because you're waiting for that callback to the school you're at.
And calling them back so quickly and then keep going up to the capacity might not be the answer. I think we need to probably leave that capacity down for a while until we've looked at our assignment plan really well for the future year or two and then think about how many kids we're going to call back because it's definitely getting us. I know the whole board will be discussing this. I don't know when we'll do that, but soon, I would think we should do that soon.
So I'm not prepared to vote for this plan at this time. And the reason is, at our last board meeting, staff made the recommendation to keep the cap on Panther Creek High School. We had questions about it and we asked for more time to do our due diligence. And while doing that due diligence, you've come back with a new recommendation to remove the cap from the high school without any information as to why. In addition to this, in doing my due diligence, my diligence came back and said, do not do this. I joke with my friends in Mooresville about how divisive sometimes like the town council can be, but I think this is probably the one issue that will unite all of them in perfect harmony. The Mooresville community and the Panther Creek High School community does not want to see that cap lifted. If you look at what the cap means and as people talk about caps, I think that we have a lot of miscommunication, a lot of misunderstanding in the community about what that means. And we talked about that at the last meeting, about how people hear, well, a school is capped, so maybe I should pursue a charter. We hear a school is capped, so maybe I should go somewhere else. When a school can have a cap and students can still get into the school, you know, I think we need to do a better job of explaining to people what caps are. If we have, just because, but specifically to Panther Creek High School, just because we now have an enrollment slightly less than what the cap was, I don't think that justifies taking off the cap and then seeing any additional growth push us back over what that cap number was. And then do we come back and recap?
Well, that's what they said last time.
Well, this is why I wanted to do my due diligence and ask questions about it. We didn't really get the question answered. We wanted more time to go and talk about it and find out what those issues are. And you know, what we find in talking to community, like what Roxy was just saying, sorry, Ms. Cash was just saying.
Hi, I'm Roxy.
About what parents think. If you cap the kids, they get overflowed, they get to a school, they like the overflow, now you call them back, well, they either have to leave the high school that they're at or they lose their transportation. I mean, there's a lot of issues with the capping, the overflow that bothers our community. But here, if you have a school that was built originally for capacity of 1,750 kids, it's accommodated up to 1,000 more kids, more than 1,000 more kids, just because we know we can put them in there, you know, again, capacity with trailers, it's only 99% full, that's still about, I don't know the math, about at least 40% more capacity than the cafeteria was intended to handle, than the auditorium, the gym, the parking lot, and all of the rest of the school infrastructure. So it just, you know, I know that we don't have the capital facilities to house all of the students that we would like to at the ratios that we want. And I know that we have to put more students into available schools close to their communities. And so that pushes the stress and the strain. But we have this cap here that will protect Panther Creek from getting above that number that the community, past staff, past parents, current parents are saying is too crowded as it is. And your original recommendation was to keep the cap. And again, I really feel that, you know, we had questions about the cap. We wanted to go out and talk to the community about it. Staff in the community have been very diligent and very helpful in answering those questions. And so, you know, with those questions answered, I don't see any reason to change your original recommendation. And I hope that the recommendation wasn't changed just because we had questions about it. But that's where I stand on the issue. I've heard from, again, numerous people in the community about it, and I think we need to keep that school to reasonable enrollment.
I think as we looked at their existing situation, I think that the unknown for us was growth in the area. And we did try to take a much deeper look to see, was that going to be immediate, meaning in the next year or so, or was it spread out a little bit more over time? It wasn't crystal clear. So looking and based on some of the concerns that were shared, we factored that in. We did speak with, you know, some stakeholders as well. And it was on the bubble. As you said, it could go either way. We looked into as well the idea that there was not any plan, at least in the next calendar year, to remove any of the existing capacity through the modules and took that into consideration. We are certainly open to.
Further discussion.
Further discussion.
Mr. Fletcher, I have to stand by. Mr. Brown.
I was fairly vocal in our committee meeting about why should we maintain the cap? And I've been part of the due diligence conversations as well. And the community is of the opinion that right across the street, there's what they consider to be a huge subdivision coming in without clarity as to how many high school students there will be, either initially or over time. And so my question, I'm willing to support the cap staying in place for a year, which was staff's original recommendation. The companion is, would it make sense for us to look at the new development and perhaps identify whether it would be appropriate for that new community to be assigned further south to Green Level? Even though it might be holding within what's an existing Panther Creek area? And I don't know the answer to that, but I would like for that to be looked at.
Yeah.
If it's a spot note. And perhaps more clarity on what that is. But I'm willing to support Chris and the community in wanting to maintain, and staff, frankly, because y'all made the recommendation to maintain the cap. And I think perhaps I was the most vocal in the committee meeting to take it off. So I don't know what we do if we're supposed to take action on this tonight. Can we make that?
So the decision on the table would be, it doesn't take much to revise the action item to maintain the cap at least for another year as we continue to get additional data on what's happening with the development across the way, explore the opportunity of a spot note, so to speak. And it actually maintains the status quo.
Right.
As opposed to a change.
Does it change or not change?
Right. So that, we can make that change to the preceding action item, but we would need to hear from the board at this time about sort of a straw poll on where we are with that.
I would want to also know how the dynamic of opening Green Level, either adding an entire class next year or how that affects Panther Creek because part of that reassignment did take a big chunk from Panther Creek. So that's, because I don't, I think capping is inefficient. And if we can remove a cap, I would rather do it. Because of the thing that you actually said, Mr. Nagerdy, which was the perception in the community of the school is capped, so I can't get in even though I've lived there for 10 years and that wouldn't, the cap wouldn't affect you. It's confusing. So if we can remove a cap, I would prefer removing it. But I would want that data reinforced about Green Level.
Just hearing the additional questions, I think we're better off removing the item from the agenda and bring it back on the 18th with any additional information or exchange of stuff in between.
I agree.
Just Panther Creek. Can we just remove Panther Creek and keep the other recommendations? Is that possible?
Well, I think, you know, if you have what you need.
I think with our elementary schools especially, and the growth that's in that area, I mean, you know, you have parents who, there's going to be a difference between a parent who has a kindergartner today versus, you know, how many parents who are rising, move into the base in the next two weeks. I mean, I had a school in my district where the first week of the second, the first week of January, they saw 19 kids come into that school. So that's kind of a difference where we're worried about crowding at our, I'm most concerned about the crowding at our elementary schools. And the Panther Creek, I think, is an issue for us to discuss and explore. But if we feel very firm about the schools that are there except for this one, I think keep the ones that are here and take.
Okay.
So that's the audible I was going to call. Can we accept the recommendations from staff, take Panther Creek off the table and bring it back separately so that we can go ahead and move on to the others?
And that basically just means Panther Creek is status quo until some other decision is made.
And we want more information on.
Because, am I not correct, we could lift a cap at any time.
Yes.
Should we want to.
For next year, no matter what.
And I'd like to look at the growth. Because that is such a high growth. I don't know if that's the answer.
We do, we do have one other item on the agenda that includes staff that are here from the county. I, you know, I think it would be done in 15 minutes. So I would like to at least get started with that and see where it goes rather than having them stay for the board meeting.
But it's so much fun.
Yes. We need some people.
All right, so long range in the forecast. And Mr. Martin, you'll continue with the drive. So we're capping and ready to go. I didn't know we did with transportation yet. I'm sorry.
He's making a joke. I got it.
Yes, somehow the planets all align to that variety of topics that are in my wheelhouse all about today. So I appreciate your patience. So we will shift gears to our enrollment forecast. Before we do begin, I do want to take this opportunity to introduce a few staff. With me here at the table is Emily Lucas with Wake County Government. She's the Chief Financial Officer. Also with us, and I'll let her introduce her staff, I have obviously Mr. Carosa, Ms. Lighthall, Mike Miller with Numerex is here as well as to answer any questions that the board may have. And I'll let you introduce your staff.
Sure. And with the county, we have our budget director, so he's also part of our core team that works on facilities and then our budget processes.
So earlier this year, the North Carolina DPI has verified the district's average daily enrollment, which grew by about 1,500 students this year. Our total enrollment was 161,907 students. As you recall from last year's forecast, it was significantly different than previous years in that there were fewer school-aged children regardless of where they could attend school. And what we see, and what you'll see shortly, is that that theme has kind of repeated itself again this year. I do want to take this opportunity to mention specifically really the unpredictability of when and where we're seeing charter schools open in Wake County. And that has certainly made it difficult for county staff, county government staff, as well as our partners to predict public school growth. Next year, for example, there are potentially eight charter schools that have received approval from DPI to open that would impact Wake County schools. At this point, five have a physical address. One of those that has a physical address has already notified the public they will not be opening. And there's another one that does not currently have a physical address that is still marketing itself as opening. So it has created really an unpredictable landscape around predicting enrollment growth for our public schools for next year. So as we leave that thought, let's look at how this process is carried out. Let me take a moment to just share in this collaborative process how this presentation is pulled together around our enrollment forecast. Data is collected by Wake County Schools, county partners, as well as municipal planning agencies, together with the Operations Research and Education Lab at NC State University. And then this group works collaboratively with Mike Miller and Numerex to develop our enrollment forecasts. On this team, Wake County primarily, Wake County Government primarily provides economic and demographic data, and the school district is primarily responsible for providing enrollment counts and data related to enrollment trends. The process begins when the school district provides these enrollment figures at the end of the second month. And you may have heard staff refer to that PMR II, that Principal Monthly Report, at the end of Month Two. That information is then combined with the historic enrollment data and planning data to the forecast team, and then they develop the new projections. This data is adjusted annually to reflect changes in enrollments, birth rates, school-age residents, as well as parent choices.
And before we begin, we actually have another Wake County staff member, she snuck in back there behind me, Tammy DePhillip. She also works in Budget and Management Services and works on the school system. It's really just trying to roll through this so you guys can leave and go to the next meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Carosa. All right. This chart should be maybe familiar to you. We did include it in last year's presentation, but it's been updated for this one. This chart does illustrate the importance of the birth rate on the long-range enrollment forecast. The yellow line, the bottom line, represents kindergarten enrollment in the Wake County public school system. And then the top pink line shows the number of births five years earlier, so you can see the correlation between the two. For birth rates for years 2007 and prior, which would be reflected or represented in that 2012, 2013 period, increased year over year by as much as 4%. Since then, birth rates have either decreased or increased only moderately. We are predicting rates of less than 2% in future years. And you can see in future years where the birth rate is expected to decline again or essentially remain flat, that on the forecasted side, that little bump in '21, '22, '23, that's reflective of where it did peak back up again in about 2017. In this chart, you also see in 2009 was the year that the state required kindergarteners to be five years old in August instead of October, which effectively reduced the number of students eligible for kindergarten enrollment. And then you can also see the effects of the state's decision to lift the cap on charter schools in 2012, which brought five new charter schools to Wake County within three years. And for full year 2018, 2019, Wake County had 24 operating charter schools. Looking at all children ages five to 17, you can see there are similar trajectories of school-aged children in the county and WCPS enrollment. You can also see a slight increase in the two blue trend lines that are at the top of the slide. The gap represents the percentage of students who do not attend the Wake County public school system. While the increase in students attending non-Wake County public schools is not dramatic, a shift of just 1% can translate to more than 1,500 students in a way. This slide, which is sensitive data, offers insights into the current and projected or forecasted enrollments. The dark blue bar at the top of each age group represents the percentage of Wake County residents by age in 2008. And then the bottom or light blue line represents those same age ranges in 2018. So you can see that the percentage of children ages five to nine have decreased during that time. So those are the students who are in your school system today or who make up part of your school system today. We can also see that the percentage of children under five has also decreased. And these would be the children that would be eligible to enter the school system in the near future and make up part of our forecast. In addition, it's worth noting that the percentage of residents ages 25 to 44 is declining, at a time when many couples or adults have children. And this is a factor why partly, partly why fewer students are expected in the long term. And you can see further down the line, as you go up in the age ranges, the percentages continue to increase.
The next couple of slides is going to look at some of the other parent choice options that families in Wake County have. So here in this chart, you can see an increase in charter schools enrollment here in Wake County. And from 2014 and '15, there was about 9,500 students to about 1,400 students last year. Last year, wow, 14,000, did I say 1,400? I apologize.
Wishful thinking.
Yes. I will say though, last year's gain for charter school students at the end of their PMR II, their gain was 200, or 275 students. Homeschools have also seen an increase in Wake County. And you can see that their enrollment was just above 10,000 in 2014, '15, to about 13,000 last school year. While it's not shown here, other data points that we've reviewed show that this trend is an increase across the state as well as across the nation right now. The 2019-20 enrollments for homeschools, based on how they report data to the state, will not be available to us till this summer.
Those are lagging indicator. But because we pay a charter bill every month, we know those every month.
The last group of schools that we have obviously reviewed the data, private schools have grown a bit slower in Wake. Private school enrollment in 2014, '15 was about 17,000 students, and last year was about 18,500 students. And again, like the previous slide, we do not have the 2019-20 enrollment numbers yet. So deciding when one trend ends and another one starts is probably one of the most difficult decisions to make. Enrollment forecasts are just that, they're forecasts, and they're based on past behaviors. So when we see behaviors change, so do forecasts. And I think what this slide shows is the significant shift in the forecast that you all saw last year. And what we're seeing is that that trend is continuing this year. It's worth repeating, I think, at this time, that the unpredictable nature of charters, of when they're going to open, when they're going to close, and estimating that impact on future forecasts is very difficult. Next year, we could see negligible growth of less than 50 students. But as Emily pointed out, a 1% change, it could be 1,500 students as well. And there's, these factors of what parent choices are going to be and what choices are going to be available are revealing themselves day by day and over time. Regardless of final enrollment numbers for next year and for years to come, one of the things that I think this slide makes very clear to the community is that the overwhelming majority of families choose Wake County schools. As we've said, predicting growth in any given year is getting more and more difficult. Predicting public schools will continue as the overwhelming choice, I think that prediction is easy to make.
I think this slide nicely illustrates some of what you were talking about in your previous discussion, that all the overall population growth has slowed. There are areas of the county where population growth rate remains abnormally high. The shaded red areas on this chart reflect those areas of high growth and where you're seeing, where we're seeing more residential growth in the county. You can also see on this chart the location of eight schools that will be completed or started in the coming years as part of the district's planned building program. And all of these are in those high-growth areas. And while we take this opportunity to focus on some of the new schools, it is also critical to understand and maybe remind ourselves and the public that the school's building program is comprised not just of new facility needs, but the renovations such as HVAC replacements, learning space improvements, and classroom technology. And these things positively impact the entire district. We added to this chart this year the little triangles to show schools that are part of the plan that will be renovated over the next couple of years.
I think one of the questions that was asked in the earlier capping conversation is what has been the impact on seats across the district? And I think that the uneven nature of the growth that, from the previous slide, coupled with the K3 class size, I think illustrates the immediate need that we have. We wouldn't have been having that engaging capping conversation if there wasn't need for capacity based on growth in Wake County. This chart here has been updated. This has been a previous chart that has been shared with the board. It's provided to us by the Facilities Department, and it shows the number of seats gained and lost at the elementary level based on planning regions. In many regions, you can see that we're really struggling to maintain that current legislation student-teacher ratios with the lost capacity that we've had, even with the opening of new schools that was shown on that previous slide. I know I'm moving quickly, so just some final closing considerations. And I think as Emily pointed out in the last bond, two-thirds of that current funding has been spent to support schools across the district around the needs for modernization, complete rebuilding, as well as upgrades to HVAC, heating, infrastructure, and technology. Secondly, I would say the overall change in the growth rates, as we've talked about here before, afford us the opportunity to possibly reduce crowding in some of these overburdened schools, as well as catch up with some of the deferred maintenance that you all as a board and the community's been struggling with across the district. And lastly, again, thanks in large part to this local funding from county commissioners, we've been able to address some of the longer-term reductions that we've seen in state funding to support this.
It's a great presentation. I just have one question about Slide 12 for that new elementary school, 2024, in the West North Apex, Southwest Cary area. Is that something that we have?
Is that something that we have that I just didn't know about, or is that land that we're looking for in that area?
That would be the second.
Okay.
We know we need one, we're looking for the land.
Okay. It's E51, we have that. Right, no, I know where E51-
2024.
E51 is down in Holly Springs. 2024, Northside, Holly Springs, is the 51 site that we do have? No, yeah, I was asking where it says new elementary school 2024, right under where it says renovations.
So it's in the CIP, it's in the CIP plan, that, that actual physical site location has, has yet to be determined. But we know based on, on circles.
So we need what, 24 acres minimum?
Sky huts.
Okay.
And Mr. Martin, can you send us some of the data that you and, and the county-
Sorry, I thought I missed it.
...data that you all just presented.
Numerical data.
Numerical data that you read to us. I think that would, that you and Ms. Lucas had, that would be very useful.
I would be more than happy to. Are there any additional questions? Obviously, we've, we've also loaded up the, the, kind of some of the backup materials from, from Mike and as, as well as others that went into the creation, so.
Thank you. That's in symbols. Thank you.
Good information.
Okay. Thank you for your interview.
Thank you for your patience and, and letting us squeeze this in to support our county partners in this process.
I got you. Okay, thank you.
Sorry, we didn't get a chance to-